It is December the 17th, 2019. We're here at 6:00 PM at City Hall at 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council Regular Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to first introduce our honorary City Council member, Carly Hill, of the Steam Academy of Manbreno, Granbury ISD. Jump up there and wave them right here. There you go. There you go. Carly is a fifth grader at the Steam Academy at Manbreno. She is the daughter of Jamar and Tiffany Hill, sitting up here on the front row. And she has an older sister, Sapphire, and a younger brother, Jamar Jr. She's an active and avid athlete. Carly plays select soccer and basketball. She also swims year-round with the Granbury Seals, even in the cold water, huh? Okay, well, we have an event for you. She is a very hard-working student, and her favorite subject is math. One of her favorite memories in school was, now, I don't know how she did this, but their favorite memory of school was playing the role of the Statue of Liberty in the second grade. Now, my grandkids couldn't stand still that long, I don't think. That was pretty tough, right? Okay. She's an artist in her free time, and Carly enjoys drawing people and animals. So, once again, welcome Carly to the City Council. I'd like to call upon Ben Hubner, the Associate Pastor of the Outreach at Acton United Methodist Church, to do our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge, led by our own junior councilperson, Carly Hill. All rise, please.
Would you pray with me? Holy and gracious God, we give you thanks to this day. God, we give you thanks for this Christmas season that we're entering into. God, we give you thanks that you came down to this earth as Jesus Emmanuel, that you are with us. God, we give you thanks for the work of this city, God, for each and every person in this city and in this county. God, for all the great things that you are doing, for all the places that you are at work. God, we pray this evening that as this City Council is working together, God, that they would receive your wisdom. God, that they would do exactly what you would have them to do. God, that they would lead the city in the direction that you would have them lead it. And God, we thank you that you are with each and every one of them. And God, we pray this evening especially for our first responders, for our police officers, for our firefighters. God, we pray that you would be with them in this Christmas season. For all those who are working on Christmas Day, we thank you for them, and we thank you for all of the good things that they do. Lord, we pray all these things in the mighty and powerful name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Follow me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and invisible.
At this time of the program, we have our public comments on agenda items for non-public hearing agenda items. I don't even think we have any, do we, Chris? No public hearing items, anyway. So, the speakers have a time limit of three minutes allotted at this time for comments regarding agenda items that are not listed as a public hearing. Public hearing comment can be recognized with the public hearing when it is open. And like I said, we don't have any public hearings, so we can speak on all three of the items. And we do have some people that have signed up to speak, the first one being Julia Pennell.
Thank you, mayors, city manager, and city councilpeople. I'm Julia Pennell. I live at 403 West Bridge. In 1993, we bought property two blocks from the square. And in March of 1994, 25 years ago, that same April, a month later, we attended our first City Council meeting and have been attending since. We have missed only a handful of meetings. That is all to say, we have seen the following over these past years. At times, very bad leadership at the top position in the city. Not so today. We believe we now have some of the best leadership possible, leading our city of employees. Over the years, we have witnessed some really bad leadership at the police department, resulting in discontent and poor employee relationships and not acting as a team. Not so today. We believe our police department has great leadership, and the officers, many who we know could work at other cities making more money, show up for duty, ready to lay down their lives for you and for me, every shift. We believe we have police department that gives their best as they see it, every moment, every day, in all situations. Some of our city employees and city management now has this beautiful building. I like to call it a small capital. You deserve this space. You deserve to be safe. You deserve to have an environment that creates a good work vibe for all. The city department having their own space elsewhere, we believe the city employees working here will also be safer. And we believe the Granbury Police Department deserves the same respect, building safety, and a chance to move their technology into the future. A place adequate for training and for addition of new officers. My family applauds the steps you are taking to be a council that looks forward to the future. Over the past 25 years, we have watched councilmembers fight, not work together at times, and it might seem to further their own agendas. We do believe that we have a council today that is willing to stop, listen, and move forward to be ready to safeguard the generations to come. I encourage you as mayor and each councilperson to endorse and vote for the very best for our Granbury Police Department. I, as a taxpayer, want my tax dollars used to make us all safer, and that includes the police department. Thank you.
Our next speaker is J.C. Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, lady councilman and councilman, city manager. I must be getting old or something because I didn't hear about this till Saturday. And someone said that they were looking to something about using Decker Gym for a police department. And that reminded me of when I moved to Granbury in 1960, we had the entire sheriff's department in the little room over to jail, the old jail. And so, if you want to save money, we can move back over there. You can probably get it a whole lot cheaper from the county or from the people who run the museum over there. But the object is, if you're a city, you're obligated to your people to grow. If you're not growing, you're dying. And so, you've got to spend this money. You've got, you have money now. We didn't have money. So, we couldn't buy a light bulb without going to the cash register every day. That's the truth. But this is something that I think our councilpeople up here really need to think long and hard about because if you don't keep up with the times, you're going to really be behind. So, I hope that you guys are, everything else you're being foresighted about, I think you need to be foresighted about this, about the new building for the police department. It's designed to protect them when they're on duty there. And so, that's what you need to do. And I appreciate the time. I appreciate what you guys do. Because to give yourself up, to come up here and to take criticism, and to take, you get to play phrases too, but when you do your job, sometimes it hurts people. But you've got to look at what is good for all of the citizens of Granbury, not for just two or three. But thank you for what you do.
Our next speaker, or speakers, I might say, is Mr. Steve Vale and Bill Reardon. And the reason they have gone to approach that is the same time, they're both going to be talking on the same issue, but they won't be speaking together. We can't speak together, we can sing together, right? Okay.
We can sing.
But don't sing, okay?
We could sing.
So, it looks like Steve Vale is going to speak.
I'm going to speak first, and I'm going to turn it over to Bill here. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, city manager, city attorney, city council. My name is Stephen Vale. I live at 1600 Monterey Bay Court here in Granbury, Texas. I serve on the Plane and Zoning Commission, and I'm on the Architectural Board in Catalina Bay. And Mr. Bill Reardon lives at 1601 Catalina Bay Court. He's a retired professional architect and owner of Reardon Boat Works here in Granbury. I gave you each a packet. There's a two-page document, which I'm going to review with you. There's a cost estimate page and a set of drawings professionally done by Mr. Reardon that he's going to take you through here in just a second. So, with that, our purpose tonight is really to review a complimentary plan for the creation of a public Granbury City Marina. I've had this idea for quite some time, and I've, no pun, or pun intended, I floated it out there with a number of people to get some feedback. Thank you, Mr. Mobley. The project would tie in with the proposed plan for the outdoor deck expansion and boat slips at the Lake Granbury Conference Center to create a Granbury City Multi-Use Lakefront Complex. The plan was presented to our deputy city manager last week and shared with other staff. The feedback was they also had the same thought along those lines and liked the idea. Little background information, I did go back and look at the Strategic Planning Council Retreat back from this past February, reviewed the key pillars that were identified coming out of that strategic planning meeting, and those were infrastructure, economic development, tourism, development of city-owned property, utilization of the Lake Granbury involving the BRA, and finally, public safety. In the model markers portion of the document, it listed several highlights in the proposed project that we're going to talk about delivers on these, including utilizing Lake Granbury and tourism with boat shows, boat races, parades, and other events. Marketing of the lake for recreation and more activities for local use of residents. I also looked at the most recent community survey response. The number-one response of the greatest asset from the Granbury citizens was almost 25%. And then they mentioned Lake Granbury, followed by local character, history preservation. And our jewel, crown jewel here in downtown is the historic downtown district. The proposed project capitalized on the importance of Lake Granbury, the downtown access, and really a multifunctional venue that literally links Lake Granbury Conference Center via the adjacent city walkway. The City Marina provides, which Bill will give a little bit more detail, a really safe harbor for a marina. And I'll let Bill kind of take you through a little bit more detail on that in a second. But the multifunctional marina would be used to dock boats, used for a city beach, all the downtown restaurants, which is fairly unique to some other venues that we have in town, which are one destination when you pull up on your boat. We have a multitude of restaurants, shops, entertainment. It's a five-minute walk from where the proposed marina would be to the visitor center in downtown. The walk from the conference center conversely is about a half-mile walk, about 10 minutes. So, the proposed Granbury City Marina, or Nen, it's a shameless thing here, but we could call it the Hewlett City Marina.
Easy.
Which has got a real ring to it. Which would include gate access, signage, and lighting. So, we've reached out to a number of organizations to get a preliminary thought on this. Feedback has been positive. Bill and I both belong to a couple of organizations. Bill's going to take you through the couple of highlights, and then, basically, you know, we would be open to, willing to work for, you know, with the BRA on this. And we're just recommending that you take a look at this as you look at the proposal for a Phase 1 behind the conference center.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Reardon. Move up to the mic, everybody. Bring it down there just a little bit. All right.
Drawing you all have shows the proposed marina in relationship to the conference center and the Hilton Garden Inn. And it's adjacent to the existing walk. There's a little area here of deep water. This proposed marina at the land end has eight feet of water, and when you go out to the end of the existing walk, it's about 14 feet. The marina has a breakwater to protect the water inside, the docking, from the wind waves and the boat waves. And an easy access in the side, lots of circulation room inside for boats. Your capacity is a minimum of 24 boats. Slips are 20 feet wide, 20 feet deep. The, got notes. The cost on this, we didn't have much time to put a detailed cost together, so we used the cost from your architect, who's developing the project for the conference center boardwalk. And based on that, cost for the docks, including lighting and a little fence work, comes to It's a simple layout, easy to build, no complications, easy access. And unless there's any questions, that's pretty much it. Pretty much self-explanatory.
Thank you, Bill, and thanks for the drawings. At this time, is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak on any of the items on the agenda tonight? We've got a bunch of listeners out here tonight, right? Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much. At this time, we'll close that part of the program. This time, we're going to move into the consent agenda. The first item being to consider approving the City Council meeting minutes of December 3rd, 2019, regular meeting. Second item being consider approving the purchase and installation of audiovisual equipment for the Granbury City Hall Council Chambers from Ford Audio-Videos System, LLC in amount of $63,358, utilizing the public education government PEG funds, and consider adopting the orders number 1991, amending the operating budget for the general fund using that PEG fund for the fiscal year 2019, 2020. And the third item being consider adopting orders number 1992, amending the operating budget for the general fund, utility fund, and the fleet fund for the fiscal year 2019 and '20. So, council, you've had an opportunity to look at these consent agenda items. Are there any of those items on there that you wish to discuss or pull off of the agenda at this time? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley and, just grinning.
Second.
And Councilman Wadley.
I'm leaving.
Any more discussion, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. And you're on. The consent agenda is approved. The consent agenda is approved. The consent agenda is approved, yeah. There you go.
The consent. The consent agenda is approved.
Well, that concludes our honorary City Council member, Carly Hill. At this time, I would like to present Carly with a certificate. The certificate says, "This distinction of honorary councilmember is presented to Carly Hill, Steam Academy at Manbreno Student Council President." I didn't know that. "On this day, 17th day of December 2019, in recognition of academic excellence, leadership, and representing the qualities of an excellent councilmember, signed by Dr. Jeremy Glenn, the Granbury ISD, and myself, Nen Hill, the mayor of the City of Granbury." And also, there is a certificate on the back of this certificate that will go along with you, and you'll have this for, you know, when you go into college or even go get a job. And it says on its back of it, it says, "Congratulations on being chosen to serve as an honorary councilmember with the Granbury City Council. Keep this certificate for your records, and as you apply for colleges and scholarships in the future, be sure to list this as one of your achievements, along with being the Statue of Liberty, okay? Your service to Granbury ISD as a student leader on your campus is appreciated." And we do appreciate what you do on your campus. We wish you the best of luck on the bright future, Dr. Jeremy Glenn of the Granbury ISD, and myself and the council of the City of Granbury. Thank you, council. I'd also like to present her with the Granbury pen, and if I can get the council to stand up, we'll get a picture with this young lady. You just stand right there, they'll gather around you. Okay, and if I could get our mayor pro tem, Tony Mobley, to escort you back down, your family. Once again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I probably got to start introducing myself a little differently. She, we walked around the building a little bit and showed her what she's going to be doing, and as we were sitting up here, she looked at me and said, "Where's the mayor?" Well, Chris.
Wait a minute, you're the mayor? When did that happen?
I hope she wasn't disappointed, that's all I can say. I think we're waiting on some information here real quick. Got a thumbs up. Got a thumbs up. Okay, folks, we got a deliberation agenda consists of a couple of items on here that as we go through these, the first one, there's a lot of moving parts, you might say, with it, and we're going to be talking about some of the things we talked about at the last council meeting, where we want to determine whether or not we want to issue bonds for the police station, the boardwalk, the different items on there. And so, we do have some board council here, which is the attorneys for the issuing of bonds, so they're the bond council. And so, what I would like to entertain with council is to break and go into executive session at this time, so we can get a better understanding from those folks and then bring it back out here to the dais.
Mr. Mayor.
I have, Mr. Mobley.
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules to convene an executive session pursuant to Texas Local Government Code 551-071 to consult with the attorney and the bond council.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Corgan. All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. As approved, we will now go into executive session. Now reconvened into open session, there was no action taken in the executive session. We'll now move into their deliberation agenda, the first one being discuss and consideration of all matters incident and related to the approving application of a public notice intention to issue certificates of obligation, including the adoption and resolution of Resolution Number 19-30 pertaining to thereto. I would normally call upon Chris Kaufman to lead us off into this, but Chris is gone. Be right back. There he is. Chris, you want to lead us into item number four here, discussing the certificates of obligation?
Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you. As provided direction to put together a financing plan for those matters that we discussed at the previous council meeting, can y'all hear me okay?
Two no's and one yes, so.
I'm trying to turn on a lap pad here. Okay, so, we were talking at the last meeting about the old hotel, the historic hotel that's in dilapidated condition, that was formerly used as the Opera House dorms. Some options to put that together. At the end of the day, we received a letter from Preserve Granbury that stated that they had sought out and met with a historical preservation engineer, that they were considering contracting using Preserve Granbury money to come up with a historic preservation of that facility. And so, I would recommend not even worrying about that project at this time. I do think that there's another person that has looked at the building since our meeting that's interested in possibly buying it. So, I think that we don't need to consider moving forward to worry about the hospital at this particular time. In the future, if you do want to make it into a parking lot, I think there's enough money in the general fund to allocate that through the budgeting process and make that happen. So, that gives Preserve Granbury more time to work on their plan for that facility, and also, the public, if they're interested, to give us ideas about putting it up for sale through a sealed bid or whatever other legal way that we could do that auction. The other option, the other item on our discussion that I was instructed to help you find financing scenario was a new police station or police facility located on Highway 567. And I've actually got a clicker here. That's the boat docks, that's the square, that's the Decker Gym. I don't see the police.
Keep on going. Nope.
All right, we're done. Didn't make it, did it, Carla? There it is.
Didn't make the cut.
So, there's a aerial shot of the land that the city owns and how that facility would lay on there. We've been through this with the architect and, explain that, that's the interior room programming of the building. We've actually met with the police department and worked through their work process and organized this building to be an efficiency structure to where they can operate efficiency and also have what they need to provide the services that we receive. There's some elevations of the building for those that weren't here at our last meeting. And there's a budget right there for you that was spelled out, and it also includes a contingency fund and a furniture fixture and equipment cost. And those are rough numbers, but we think that there's plenty there to do everything we're talking about. We did put together a little larger number because of some drainage that needs to be addressed, and I added $150,000 to our scenario for that. And then, let me go back up to the other items. The other discussion we had was the deck expansion. This is the full-blown menu of it right there. That's the deck expansion with docks that would tie the hotel and the conference center together with more tourism activity. This will fall under the category of Parks and Recreation, and will allow the tourism to be able to excel in that area. We also did some research on other facilities. There's really not anything like this in our region. Lake Tanglewood at Lake Texoma has some areas similar to this, but nothing like this. There's some other lakes that have venues on the water, but nothing like this. And so, this would be an unusual format that might attract lots of tourism. And also, the, like was presented earlier, the idea of being able to get people on our historic square from across the lake. So, you have events in that way that would work for you. There was a concept budget for that put together as well, just under $3 million, and that too included 10% contingency. And so, that kind of gives you a little room to wiggle. This is the square project where we were talking about possibly putting sprinkler system in those buildings. However, we've decided that structurally, the way to approach that is back up, slow down, go through the process with the property owners one more time, and give the council time to work on that. And if we issue these bonds, we would have the street. on that. And if we issue these bonds, we would have the, the street, um, money put aside from this bond instead of taking it out of our budget, and that would allow us to use regular general fund money towards this project in the way that you may determine best at that time. Uh, the last thing that we talked about was the Decker facility and the, the Granberry ISD property. I just put this map on here so you could see, the red line indicates what the school, uh, system gave us. Uh, when we received that property, it was understood there's improvements that need to be made and, uh, asbestos that needed to be addressed. And it was considered that that would be equivalent to the cost of buying the land in a, in a store. However, uh, in the proposal that I put together for you, I did listen to you and removed the bleacher improvements. I also removed the asbestos abatement from all the buildings except the Decker Gem facility. Uh, the old historic gem, it has a roof leaking and, uh, the floor is getting damaged. And so we've proposed in this, in this financing package to, uh, number one, fix the roof and, uh, get rid of the, the water leak, uh, leaks, I should say, and then repair the water damage on the gem floor and other areas. Also do the asbestos abatement in that building only, and then put air conditioning in the system with insulation. And, um, and then the facade where the old classrooms were torn down, the facade of the building needs to be repaired, and so we figured repairing that. And we also are, are planning on putting in ADA compliant restrooms for men and women. So that altogether was about $700,000. So those, that's kind of the breakdown of the way it shakes out on your form here. I did, uh, put in your packet, and I, I know that you don't like to hand, get things handed out to you, but this is in your packet, so this is just a hard copy of what I already gave you. But this shows you the different packages, if you break it down individually, uh, by project, what the actual cost is. And so that slows down boss. Everybody got one? So that kind of gives you, uh, five columns to look at. The first column being, uh, $400,000 if you wanted to use that money for, to build a parking lot. It's pretty generic, you can build a parking lot anywhere if you borrow the money to do that. Um, and then the, uh, public safety project would be the police facilities. The first park and recreation column would be the, uh, expanded deck and dock area. And then the next column would be $2 million towards the streets, which would free up the money in the general fund over the next two years to be able to do the sprinkler system project. And then the last one is the Decker Gem column. So that kind of gives you a, a brief overview of, of the way the, the, the money could be funded for these projects. I really think that, uh, it's up to y'all to decide and parcel what you want to do. Uh, we've got bond council here tonight, we've got our financial advisor here tonight, and they're able to help us walk through this process. There's a resolution that's in your packet that, um, we need to, to pass a resolution to begin this process. If, if you want to do that tonight, we've got it for you, and we're ready to let the, the clock start ticking. If you did pass the resolution and all goes according to, uh, schedule, we would be funded by, early in March, at last of February. So, um, what, the next item on the agenda after that would be to, uh, engage the, our, the architect firm to begin the project for the police department. So there's no sense in doing the next one, the last item on the agenda if you don't do this resolution themselves.
Right, we don't start this one, right.
Some shape or form. Be happy to answer any questions if you have any, and we'll go from there.
Well, thank you, Chris, and thanks for working on this so diligently and getting it out here so quick. I really wasn't, uh, thinking we'd have this till after the first year, but I can see the timeline, and we'll be looking at things like that. Counsel, do you have any, uh, questions for Chris on, uh, on the packet here? Sure we do. Good question, wow. Chris, you must have done a great job.
I'll read your packet.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
I'm wondering, what if we took J.C. Campbell's recommendation and put the police department in Decker Gem? We, we would do that. I, I would like to make a motion then. Dang it. You know, I, I like the fact that we're, we're trying to get ahead of a lot of this. Uh, in, in, in the past, we've kind of hoped things get better, and we found out when you hope things get better, rarely do they. Uh, the fact that we've got, uh, a huge staff, in fact, I was talking to somebody up front this morning about the number of people in each department, and clearly the most packed part of this house that we're sitting in right now is that end of the building downstairs. Uh, and the fact that these guys are having to climb all over each other, and I've seen some of these guys, they don't climb really well, but the fact that they're having to climb over each other to get their gear and get their, get their uniforms on, uh, I think we've done them a great disservice, uh, and I would like to see us change that going forward.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Councilman Rodriguez.
The packet, it's, it's great. Um, I want to just, um, I'm glad the Opera House's dorms has, has been something I've been concentrating on, and hopefully that, that gets resolved either through one of the other means. Um, I, I saw a picture of the, the police station. Can you go back there? Can you go back to that one, Chris?
Yes, sir.
I think I can, I think I can. Uh, hopefully this is just a redemption or just a re, uh, they don't-
It's just the ground, right.
I mean, uh, is the right side, uh, that's the one picture they, uh, go back to where it has, no, one more. Uh, the right side where it's the impound lot, is that the back parking spot?
That's the back, yes. Secured.
It's secured, so that's not an entrance?
No, this, you see that red line?
Yes.
That's a fence.
Well, how many police officers need handicap spots?
Well, by law, you gotta put it there.
Well, can we, I was just wondering if those could-
You gotta have it for employee parking as well.
Okay. Well, we've got a couple of disabled veteran police officers out there that can have those, right?
Well, the thing is, is you may have an employee later that you don't have now that needs that spot.
Gotcha, okay.
So there's a law that requires what's drawn there to be there, and, um, that's why it's drawn that way for you.
Okay. That's one of my questions. I think the police station's great. Uh, one of the ideas I was throwing around to the city manager was, um, maybe utilizing Decker Field, the entire property, to house the police station, uh, this entire, um, construction of this police station. Uh, that was the idea that I was throwing around. Um, obviously, there's some, uh, logistic issues when you're having that police station in that type of area. I think the conference center, uh, uh, deck expansion, um, I'd like to look at that a little bit more and maybe come up with a different, um, concept of maybe integrating part of the deck, or part of the deck expansion along with the marina in that area. Um, I think the marina idea is a good idea. Um, maybe even having the, the possibility of a, a fueling station along with that marina is a, is, if you're going to bring in and you're going to spend that kind of money, um, one of my main concerns with the deck expansion is, you know, um, we did see a drought, um, with the lake. Um, and then when you have no water, you have no boats. You have no boats, you're having to, um, you know, spend money to maintain something that nobody's using. So that's one of my concerns with the deck, deck expansion. Um, Decker Gem, uh, that, that is one thing that is, you know, I could go either way, preserve it or tear it down. Um, and, and here's, here's how I'm thinking. You know, let's, if we're gonna use that Decker Field for further expansion, you know, you know, one of the thoughts that I was thinking is maybe u- utilizing it for maybe, um, a real community college or, uh, or possibly a sports complex, that it can be used for a sports complex. Uh, maybe, you know, instead of using the money to renovate a building, use the money to, uh, make something new that could be utilized, uh, in concert with the other things that are already on that field, like the football field, you know, making new basketball, outdoor basketball fields, making, uh, maybe a complex out of that whole area instead of just, uh, renovating just that one Decker Gem building. I mean, the, the renovations, money of $700,000 could go towards, uh, the cost of a new building. Uh, but those are my thoughts. Uh, that's what I have.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
So, my understanding was, as far as the, the deck, uh, behind the conference center, what, isn't it designed for more than just, uh, water events, more, i- i- in the space available, something where, uh, let's say we go, God forbid, we go through another drought at some point, but couldn't that area be used for events, much like the squares? Isn't that our goal to kind of tie it in with a square and kind of coordinate some events, uh, going forward?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the existing deck is only 10 feet wide, the new deck's 30 feet wide-
Right.
And like 50 or 50, 50 or 60, that wide part.
So effectively, because in my mind, we can use this during the winters, even when folks aren't necessarily, uh, wanting to get out of their boats, but we could still actually, uh, do some events there.
It changes the dimension of, of what we can market for our hotel conference center. Um, you know, I've got, uh, all kinds of stuff that Tammy looked up for me that I could go over with you. Uh, I scratched the surface with Tanglewood Resort Conference Center in Plussboro, Texas. Uh, that's, that's out on Preston Peninsula, and they've got a hotel facility there and, but they don't have an outdoor dock area like that, but they do have a conference center there. Uh, Lake Levon Camp and Conference in Princeton, Texas, uh, it's more of a recreation where there's water slides and things like that for, for families to do. Um, of course, that's on our bucket list as well, is to have a, you know, a Slitter Bond type thing right over there by Home Depot. We'd all love that, wouldn't we? With hotels and, and, you know, but, you know, we're not there yet. Uh, Hilton, uh, DFW Lakes Executive Con- Conference has, uh, golf and tennis, uh, retreat, and, uh, they, they market that, and it's close to the lake. Uh, Lakeview Event Conference Center, Veridian, over at Lake Arlington, um, they've got a small deck out there, nothing like what we're talking about. Um, 4H Conference Center, uh, in Brownwood, they've got, they've got a, a conference center on the water, but nothing like what we're talking about. Um, White Bluff, if you've ever been over there, they've got, um, some conference and golf facilities there, and, um, you know, boat docks, but for the, for the public to be able to utilize. Uh, Possum Kingdom has their, uh, marina and event center. Um, again, I think what, what's been presented is, is groundbreaking, um, type activity that you're not going to find just anywhere else in, in the, in the state unless you go down to the coast and you're at Kima or somewhere like that. Um, so there's, there's a wedding event down at Lake Travis where you can see the water from there and a little bit of an outdoor area. Um, but, you know, that's kind of what you're dealing with, and, and that allows us to market ourselves in a new way. And I see Ms. Dooley came in, um, to the meeting, and she could certainly talk to you some more about that, but you heard that at the last meeting, so.
And, and, and counsel, I'm not gonna, you know, we, we're gonna have a lot of time to discuss each and every one of these items, you know. Tonight, what we're doing is just, uh, uh, a pa, you know, adopting the resolution to, uh, to authorize the cer, the issue of these certificates of obligation. And we, and once we do this, we can use money up and down, add to, take away, we can do a lot of that with that money. And then we'll be, we'll be talking about each one of these items in length, about what we're going to do and what we're gonna, you know, how we're going to do it and, and, and just that. We know that the, these, these are projects that we have, uh, said we want to do, and we've come and the city manager's done a good job to put in a dollar amount of what it looks like it's going to do, to take to do these projects. But, uh, and so right now, what we're doing is, uh, just approving the resolution to issue the bonds. So that's what we want to concentrate on right now, not, not the build of the project, not, uh, you know, how we're going to do it or what we're going to do, uh, but actually just issuing the bonds right now. So-
Mayor.
Is there any discussion on why we shouldn't issue bonds?
Mayor.
Councilman, uh, Rodriguez.
I mean, if we issue this bond, we can only spend it on these projects, is that correct?
Yes.
So we're actually voting for these projects?
We're voting on these projects, but each individual proj, project, you could come up or down with as far as how much money you use on them. You don't have to use, if, if the city managers identified 2 million on the dock expansion and we decide to just put a million into it, or we want to cut some of it out, then we move that to another project and we leave it within those four or five projects that we've got. So we're, we still got that money to use for the projects and stuff. Or if we use more on one project, then we know that we've got the other money. I see Michael coming up, Michael, if you want to speak.
Just along those same lines, I know Chris would echo this. If, if you decided to do something that wasn't exactly like this, that was still a parks improvement and related to this concept, like was presented earlier, you could still make those kind of changes, as the mayor said, as part of this package. If that's where you ended up, going through the design phase, looking at more concepts, you wanted to see more ideas, all of those kind of things can still happen as part of this process, whichever direction council wants to go.
Yeah, the only issue is that, you know, I'm for some, but not for all of them.
Right.
So, I mean, it's either all or nothing. So that's, that's the decision I have to-
No.
We can, we can make that adjustment.
It's, it's up to 20. Anything below that is your, is councils.
Right.
We can take something off.
Progative.
And-
Say that again, Greg.
We can take stuff off.
And when it, when it- Hey, Michael?
Yes, sir.
And when it's said and done, I mean, if we was to, and this might answer your question, Councilman Rodriguez, if, i- i- if we come up short, I mean, we come up to where we've done, we've finished these projects on here, and we still got, you know, we've still got bonds issued of, uh, say, 4 million or even more than that, what happens to that money?
We could appropriate that money to any of those items that are listed in that resolution. It's pretty generic on how it's listed, so if you-
No, 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 I'm saying that we've completed all of them in the resolution, but we've still got money left over.
You would still need to spend it in those areas.
Yeah.
You can't take it away and say, "Okay, we're, we're, we're gonna go spend it on the police department."
For future plans.
Unless it's, it's public safety in the resolution.
Really those purposes.
Yeah, it's got to be the purposes that we use.
Right.
But it's so generic, you can add, you can repair more streets, or you can do more parks.
I got you, right.
It, it's very flexible in the way it's set up, and, uh, and it allows you to achieve your program, if that's the program you want. If you get down the road and you run into an obstacle with any of these programs, and, and you say, "You know what? That's going to cost more than what we've got to do, let's change it and do something different."
Okay.
Peel it back, pare it down, or enhance it if the funds are available in that respect. Maybe we overestimated a probable opinion of cost, and when we actually get to the street repair, we get to do three more streets instead of the seven that we're talking about, so.
So, so answering your question, Councilman Rodriguez, if, if there's an item on here that the council chooses to, to, to delete, to not even do at all, the funding that, that is gained from that will go into any other projects and stuff? Right?
Well, unless you choose to completely remove one of the five, as Chris recom, talked about in the beginning, if you take $400,000 off the top, or whatever that number was-
Right.
From the beginning for the Opera House, that, that is removed from the CO-
Okay.
Potential.
You can remove that paragraph, or edit the wording, and these guys are here tonight ready to do that for us.
Exactly. That's what, that's the purpose of this evening, is for you all to make those choices.
Yeah, I just wanted to lay out a buffet for you.
A la carte.
See what you wanted to do. A la carte.
Counsel, any more questions to our staff or Michael, or even the attorneys down there?
Mayor.
Councilman Corrigan.
This, this might be more for the attorneys, but, um, how does this affect, if at all, uh, financially the city? How does it affect us if we decide to only do one of these projects and move the rest down the line?
I guess it'd be John Martin.
John Martin? You just thought you were done, right?
I'm not clear on the question, you mind asking?
So if we, if we just decided to do the police department per se, and the rest, we were gonna wait two years, does that benefit us financially, or does it potentially hinder us?
There's no, it's neutral, it doesn't matter one way or another.
We just have to do it before three years, right?
No.
No, no, I'm saying take it out and only issue the bond for one-
If you just, if you, if the resolution tonight only included, uh, improving and equipping public safety facilities and everything else went away, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Then, um, you, you, that's certainly your prerogative, and, and you would, you know, that, that would be pushed out to, for consideration at a later- out for consideration at a later time with another notice of intent resolution.
But I guess what I'm getting at is, anything that we decide not to do tonight, do we run into the potential for increased costs, increased-
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
You know, our rate that we're gonna be looking at, all of those things that go into it.
You have inflationary risk on your project, you have interest rate risk on your debt, so-
Issuance costs.
You're gonna have to pay issuance costs again.
Okay.
So.
And then I know this was answered already, but let's just say we approve the whole, let's call it 19 million.
Not to exceed 20 million.
And not to exceed, okay. And we decide, once we get into it, we're not even gonna mess with the parking lot, the municipal parking lot, that money just rolls over into some other project within this CO?
Yes. If you have it listed in the resolution as constructed municipal parking lot, and you've approved to do that, you have to do some, you have to do a municipal parking lot.
So it's just all about the word?
Yeah.
Okay.
It might not be the $400,000 budget you're talking about, but, you know, maybe you do some municipal parking lot somewhere for some amount of money.
Okay.
Or approve one.
Counsel, any more questions? Good questions.
You know, I would just like to tell the audience, if I could, Mayor.
Well, yeah, you can now, you asked later. After the fact.
Mayor, may I take a moment?
Go ahead.
To inform the community, earlier this year, we did a strategic planning process, and these items were identified through that process, and so Councilman Rodriguez wasn't included in that process because his life was in a different direction than he is serving now, so he's kind of caught off guard, I bet, with some of these things, so in his defense, I just want y'all to know that the council's been talking about this for quite some time, and he hadn't been, this is his third meeting, so this is a big bite. A $20 million deal on your third meeting's a big, a big change, and so we understand your thought process and appreciate that, and certainly identify with it, and I'm here to try to help you with anything I can, with information that'll prepare you to move forward any way you want, so.
Well, and to add to that, though, with the strategic planning that we did, there were a lot of what you'd call wants that never made it to the, never made it to the list, you know, because there was a lot of other things, everybody had 10, 15 items on there, and then it'd come down to another, you know, narrow it down. So these were the items that everybody agreed that we needed to take a look at and to go forward on in the future for Granbury, so.
Could I add something else?
Go ahead, Chris Coffin.
In addition to what we're talking about, and the hotel is in the process of investing about $1.7 million on refurbishing the interior with, you know, new wall material, new everything on the interior, so there'll be new carpeting, new tile, those things are in the process now, so they're freshening up already, which is a benefit to us as well, so just wanted to mention that, that the hotel's doing well, and in addition to this, would cause them to do even better, so.
Thank you, Chris. Counsel, any more discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 19-30, a resolution approving and authorizing the publication of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation for the purpose of paying contractual obligations for the municipal projects as outlined in that resolution.
So moved.
And I have that motion by Councilman Wadley.
Second.
Under second. Councilman Reiner. Any more discussion, Counsel?
Mayor.
You've got a comment by the city manager.
So, upon the passage of this resolution, we would need to have a special meeting on February 6th, that's a Thursday evening at 6:00 PM, so to pass the ordinance to actually issue this debt. This is just the notice that we're considering to do that on February 6th.
Well, I had that, was gonna-
Oh, sorry, I stole your time.
That's okay, you took my thunder, buddy.
My secretary, your secretary brought this to me.
My secretary brought you, okay. Any more discussion, Counsel?
Mayor.
Councilman Corrigan.
I would like to pass the resolution, but striking the municipal parking project.
So you want to strike the motion? Who made the motion?
Bruce.
Bruce. Bruce made the motion. It was up to you to take that off, Bruce. You can redo the motion.
I'm sure he made a motion to it, which requires a second.
Right.
Would like to make a motion to amend-
Okay.
-striking the municipal parking project.
So we have a motion to amend the municipal parking project? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Finally, by Councilman Mobley. Any discussion on that one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. So we'll strike the parking lot part of that? Once again, we still got the motion, then?
No, I carried, he amended it, voted on it.
Okay. So that is approved. I thought we just voted on that part of it.
You voted on the amendment.
Now we gotta vote on this again.
The motion now on the floor.
Yeah, that's what I said. So now with the motion on the floor, as presented, we have a motion and a second. No further discussion. As for the resolution, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That Resolution 19-30 is approved. Look forward to it. Our next item is Chris kind of led into a little bit, and yes, we are gonna have the public, public meeting, Chris read into it, but it will be, the notice that the City Council, City of Granbury, Texas, shall convene at 6:00 PM on February 6th, 2020, in the City Council chambers to discuss the ordinance, and issue the ordinance, right? That's a regular council meeting, isn't it?
Nope, special meeting.
Special meeting, okay.
February 6th is Thursday.
All right, all right. Our next item, item number five, is to approve an expenditure of up to 811,000 to cover the basic design service, as recommended, the reimbursement cost of 75,000, construction manager at risk, services 30,000, and the following specified additions. This is all pertaining to the police station, right, Chris?
Yes, sir.
You wanna go ahead and give us a little more background on it?
I'm gonna take a moment to tell you all that today is Michael's birthday, and he's here with us, working.
Thank you. Did he, did he text you?
No. I just want y'all to know, I tried to get him to take off and let me take care of this for him, and he said, no, this is a big deal, I want to be there, so.
I'm glad you're here, Michael, I'm glad you're here.
We are extremely happy to have Michael on our team, so.
Very much.
I'll turn it over to you at this time, Michael.
Let the red subside in my face here.
Matches your shirt.
Thank you. We did want, given the approval of item four, we did want to bring, this includes basically all of the soft costs that you see in the budget, plus CMAR, which is construction manager at risk, form of contract administration, which helps us save money and speed the process up, which is why we've used it on our other water and sewer projects as we've gone forward. This 811,000 includes the basic design services, the recommended reimbursable costs, which are 75,000, the construction manager at risk, which is 30,000, not to exceed, and then the following specified additional services, which include surveying, including the topography, geotechnical survey, which is a soils analysis, furniture fixtures and equipment design, which is all the, laying out all the furniture and everything that has to fit in all these new spaces, the security design, which is very important in a police station, you want to get that done when you're laying, putting in all the other wiring and putting everything else in the walls, you want to get the wiring for the security system at the same time. Same thing with data and technology, you want to get all that in at the same time, you don't want to break that out and some other consultant try to come in and do that and have people pointing fingers at each other. You want to put all these into one package and make one person responsible, and that would be PGAL, it'd be their subconsultants under them, that'll be, PGAL will be the entity we look to to make sure it all happens properly. And then commissioning is, and I'll try to explain what that is, you want, it'll be a third party that comes in and makes sure that everything that was supposed to be installed per plan is there, and that it's ready to be used, and it's gonna function as it was intended in that design. I could go into the background information a little bit on how we are, how we got to where we are today on the police station, but I think we're all understanding that, what we have in City Hall now and what we're proposing to bring into this new station. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Michael. Counsel, any questions for Michael or Chris on this item?
Mayor.
Councilman Rodriguez.
Is this 811, is that included in the 13,000 projected?
Yes, sir.
So that's gonna be part of the bond?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. All these monies, all right?
Yes, sir.
That's the soft cost plus 30,000 for CMAR in that list that you see.
Right. That's why we had to issue the bond before we went forward on this item right here, so.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, any more discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
Michael, I have one question, so hang with me for a second. How old are you?
So I'm 29.
Too old. It's one of those decades that I don't want to remember, 60, yeah, so.
Nice.
Ooh.
Yeah.
You should have brought your balloons.
I know I look 70, right?
Wait a minute, you're only 60?
Thanks.
I can barely remember 60.
Trying to get the redness back again?
Well, I got 30 more years to get there, so.
Is that all you-
I remember that age.
Is that all you had for him?
I'm kidding.
Thank you.
You got 20.
Softball.
Counsel, any more, any more questions or discussion on this item to the staff? Well, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said expenditures for the purpose of the new police station.
So moved.
And I have that motion by Councilman Reiner, and what we got down here?
Corrigan.
And the second by Councilman Corrigan.
I get them confused here.
Like I said, one of these days, I'll let you guys make the motion, and I'll know who it is. So we have a motion and a second, any more discussion, Counsel? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved, thank you, Counsel. I will now declare that the Granbury City Council has convened in open session, that all our members are present, the City Council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of Texas Government Code and the course with authority contained in these following sections, Section 551071, consultation with our attorney, Section 551087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, and if we don't see you folks when we come back out, I hope everybody has a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and please be safe out there during the holidays, thank you very much. Reconvened in the open session, there was no action taken in executive session, excuse me. Does any council members have anything to add to this discussion? Hearing none, the council meeting is adjourned.